Twenty twenty-four, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, would you please take the call?
Councilmember Bachman?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Here.
Mayor Sullivan?
Here.
Councilmember Pratt?
Here.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Here.
Councilmember Martin Ponniak?
Here.
And city manager?
Here.
Thank you, citizens council, we don't have anybody. So we are doing interviews for legal services, so thank you for submitting your firm's interest in providing legal services for the city of Manistee. We appreciate you taking the time to meet with us this evening. The process tonight will consist of council members taking turns asking two questions each, a total of fourteen questions with a possible follow-up questions. Please budget time accordingly. Following the questions, you'll have an opportunity to clarify any of your answers and wrap up with a short closing statement. We'd like to start by asking you to provide a brief introduction, approximately five minutes about your firm. So you're up first.
Hello, everyone. So I think all of you know me, my name is Tim Figuera. I'm the advocate for the city attorney, as well as my firm, Micah Myers. With me today is Richard Wilson, partner at the firm, Micah Myers, right next door here. And Richard's here to answer any questions that he might be needed for, particularly any questions about the firm that people might have, or anything else. About the firm?
Why don't you let me handle that?
Yeah, I think so.
The firm, the firm of Micah Myers, Beckenham &amp; Jones, that's the full name of the firm, began late forties, early fifties with Micah Myers, Beckenham &amp; Jones, all of whom are now deceased. We have approximately, what, twenty-four, twenty-five attorneys in the firm, three of them here in Manistee, the rest are in the Grand Rapids office. Micah Myers started out primarily as an oil and gas firm. It was the general counsel to the Michigan Oil and Gas Association for many years. And so it developed a reputation in the oil and gas and environmental areas. That scope of practice expanded considerably over the years, and now oil and gas is only just a small part of the overall operations of the firm. We have a very large local government practice group. Our response to the city's RFP lists all of the various municipalities that we represent throughout the state of Michigan. We represent townships, we represent cities, we represent villages, we represent counties, we represent just about every kind of governmental entity you can think of, airport authorities, sewer authorities, water authorities, the whole gamut of municipal services that we provide, including specifically both labor services for labor representation, for collective bargaining, as well as municipal finances. Now, I know the city uses, is it Miller Canfield? For your financial attorneys when you do a bond issue or something like that. But if Miller Canfield, for whatever reason, is not available, we have Mark Middleton and others in the Grand Rapids firm that do municipal finance. We recently did a fifteen, roughly fifteen million dollar bond issue for the Lake Mitchell Sewer Authority over in Cadillac. We also wrapped up a three or four million dollar bond last year for the village of Calaba for their new water system. So we do soup to nuts when it comes to municipal practice.
So I'll start with you, Dave.
Good evening, thanks for being here. First question I have is, how do you prioritize staff and council legal requests?
So prioritizing legal requests, I think there's always a, well, first off, I think the requirements of the client are number one for prioritizing legal requests. The client will, I think, let you know when something needs to be done soon. So usually what I do is ask for deadlines initially when an assignment is given, when I receive something that needs to be done. So I suppose, yeah, I think mediation is the way that's done. And then certainly there's things that take the front burner, I would say, every time. Usually it's, I would say, that, well, the things that are important that need to happen first are going to be handled first, and then there's other items that, you know, unfortunately can sort of sit in the back sometimes, but typically those should be only things that are not time-sensitive.
Okay.
Dave, if I could just supplement that a little bit. The other thing that affects response to client requests is other professional obligations. So if the guy sitting next to me, who, you know, is acting as your principal contact for the city, if he's in trial for two weeks on some other case, obviously, you know, the trial's gonna have to take priority. But it's only those professional obligations that would adjust the priority of the client's request.
Okay. So the second question, you kind of answered a lot of it, so I'd ask half of it, is, how responsive can you be in an emergency situation? And if you've had one, can you give me an example of when you've had to respond to an emergency on behalf of a municipal client?
Let's think of a good, a good emergency that we had. I suppose for a village client earlier this year, I had, maybe not an emergency, but the village had been looking for a new village hall to basically house all of their documents, have, you know, be the new village office, and then also be their new meeting space. And a property became available that was in the village. It was kind of across the street from their existing building, and it was within, you could see their fire station from it, so it was really a property that they didn't want to lose out on. And, you know, they communicated that to me, I think, right up front, hey, we got a building you want to buy, and we want to get an offer in this week because it's just coming out of the market. And that was a situation where we were able to get a closed session together. I believe, I think it was the next day, we were able to get a closed session together with a purchase agreement that we had to sit and read through during the meeting because nobody had time to read it, because this was something that was so time-sensitive that, at least from the client's perspective, this was something that couldn't wait because they had heard that the building was going to be a hot commodity and that it would be a good thing for a business to buy. So I guess, long story short, that was a situation where we were able to get it together, we were able to buy the building, and then they were able to move on to the next problem, which is all the things that happen when you buy a property, you have to, you have to get it ready for it being used for its purpose.
Thank you. Next question. What is your experience with marijuana licensing?
So marijuana licensing, I've never dealt with marijuana licensing on the business side, but I've dealt with it quite a bit, I'd say, from the municipal side, particularly in the areas of enforcing against the businesses that are there. And usually that's by using the CRA or the cannabis regulatory agency's rules as a sort of guide. I usually find that while I can write a terse letter to a marijuana business and let them know, hey, you're following the rules, it's one thing for me to say it, but we're also able to lodge those complaints with the CRA. And so usually that's what I've done. And I guess as an example, we had, I had a township client who had a marijuana business, and they were sort of, I guess they were, they were pressuring for the township to give additional licenses under the ordinance, and they were threatening to not pay their annual renewal fee. And so we were able to just let them know, well, if you don't do that, we're, you know, we're gonna let the CRA go, and we, I think we sent them the form, we would have sent to the CRA, and they did pay. But, so I guess I have had some experience with it, but the thing I love about the job is that there's always things to learn, so.
I would note that we, not Tim, but our firm did prepare the city's marijuana ordinance. We've also prepared the marijuana ordinance for Filer Township, although we haven't had anybody apply Filer Township yet, but. And I know we've done others.
Oh, I guess as a supplement to that, I've also been involved in litigation regarding the allowance of marijuana businesses, so I had clients who have been, we've had petitions submitted where we had to go through the petition, make sure it meets the election rules, and then deal with the lawsuits that were inevitable, unfortunately, in those circumstances, either one way or the other, if somebody was getting sued. That's, one particular client we've been through three times now, and it's a joy.
Good, thank you. Please elaborate on your firm's experience in criminally prosecuting misdemeanor cases.
So on the firm's experience, I would probably lean on Richard to talk a little bit more about that. I know a few of the folks that I've worked with down at Grand Rapids. Brad Fowler, who is listed in our, in the, in the proposal, Brad Fowler serves as the prosecutor for a couple of cities.
Right, Big Rapids is one, I think, yeah.
So I typically lean on Brad when I personally have questions, and then, and then I've also helped Brad out with some of his clients getting into municipal prosecution. But I will say, prior to joining the firm one year ago, I had not done any municipal prosecutions because I hadn't had the opportunity to do so. Because as a township attorney, primarily working in northern Benzine, Lealona, not a single one of our clients was involved in enforcing traffic laws or having police department or any, any, anything like that, so really, never come up. But, but I guess, yeah, the question to you about the firm, do you have anything to add about that?
Well, George, I know, has been doing prosecutions for you for a number of years. Are those municipal civil infractions largely, or are they misdemeanors? I understood they were mostly civil infractions.
They were misdemeanors.
But misdemeanors, okay. I have, you know, in the past, I had been appointed special prosecutor for Manistee County on occasion, when the prosecutors have had conflicts. It's been many, many years since I ever wore a prosecutor's hat. And quite honestly, I've never enjoyed that kind of work anyway, but, you know, it has to be done. Criminals have to be brought to account, so we do have, you know, we do have that experience.
I don't remember the process, but it seems like in the past, a prosecutor's officer was doing misdemeanors on behalf of the city, and then they lost that contract. And your office, your office picked that up.
Yeah.
So I would expect there would be some familiarity with misdemeanors on behalf of the city. Is there not that experience?
Not between the two of us here.
Oh, well, yeah, George had done it for a number of years.
George, okay.
Yeah, right, George, yeah. I mean, we have his records, I mean, we've got the staff, Kendra Presley, as you know, is one of our paralegals. She deals primarily directly with your police officers. I know there's always a police officer, it seems, in her office at some point when they're bringing over the reports. And Kendra does the preparation of the warrants and so on, I believe, so. But a misdemeanor is nothing more than any other type of lawsuit. I mean, you've got a separate set of criminal procedures you have to follow as opposed to civil procedures, but.
Assuming we hired your firm, would George be doing those, or would Timothy be doing them?
Tim would be doing those.
I would, I would sort of continue doing those. I've been doing those, I guess, for the last, it's actually, it's hard for me to remember the last year. It's kind of been a whirlwind since I joined the firm. There were a lot of sort of new things that I picked up doing, and one of those was municipal prosecution. And I can't say exactly when that started, but I think it was around December or so, when George stepped back and was helping me through that process. But I think with anything, you can, you know, you can only ask people so much. And you go out and learn on your own, which is what I've been doing. And frankly, I've enjoyed it, and I always enjoy a new, a new area, a new area to learn in.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys. So my question is, please elaborate on your firm's experience with nuisance abatement, abatement, like blighted or unsafe structures or tax assessments.
Do you have three days?
No.
We have, between Tim and I, we have been prosecuting nuisance cases, not for the city, but for the townships and the villages that we represent, since I became an attorney forty-four years ago. I mean, I mean, that's how long that has gone on. Every township in Manistee County, when I arrived here in nineteen seventy-nine, had a junk ordinance of some sort, or a zoning ordinance, or a nuisance ordinance. And I'm sure, Tim, I'll let you speak, your own experience on that, but most, most of the municipal clients that we represent have those kinds of ordinances. You prosecute that I know?
Yeah, more than I care to, it's, it's, it's sort of depressing work sometimes. I'd say particularly in township, but I mean, in the city too. It's, it, it often feels like you're having to go after people who don't have the means to, you know, to handle this problem. That being said, it's frankly something that has to be dealt with. And, and I know George has been doing that for the city since two thousand and fifteen, I believe. And so, well, I mean, the office has extensive experience with it. I think, as far as how that's happened since I've just represented the city, it's been a bit of a challenge because I think the city has directed me to find a different way to do it than George was doing it. And that's been my primary challenge, is that trying to find, I suppose, a different way to do it than George was doing it, and I, I, it's been difficult to find a different way, I suppose.
Okay, thank you. Okay, describe your experience working with brownfield redevelopment authorities, brownfield plans, development and reinvest, or in reimbursement agreements with tax abatements such as Oprah, or CRA, or any Z, or IFT, and develop agreements, development agreements relating to these abatements.
So I reviewed one yesterday afternoon into this morning for Mr. Bradford. That's, that's one bit of experience. I'd say prior to, prior to joining the firm personally, I didn't have a lot of experience with those because those were not very common in Lealona and in Benzine and those areas. But I know that the firm itself has eons of experience with development agreements.
I've drafted brownfield agreements, I've drafted development agreements for the city of Huntington and other municipalities. I know that the local government group on Grand Rapids has done, I'd say hundreds of them, but tens of them at least. I don't think I've ever done one for the city. I've looked at some that the city has entered into, but I haven't done one for the city. But I, I've done it for Huntington, done it for other municipalities, and I know guys like Mark Middleton and some of the others that are involved in the municipal finance because there's usually a finance component involved in all of that. I've done a lot of them, and we've got the, we've got the bench strength to handle any sort of brownfield issue that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you. What is expected turnaround time for reviewing standard terms and conditions that apply to a variety of services such as software, payments, consulting, et cetera?
So expected turnaround time around, like, regular agreements?
That's the way I took it, like reviewing standard terms and conditions.
So you get a consulting contract submitted to you, you send it to us for review. How long does it take you to turn it over?
Well, I'd say first I might want to know, what's the deadline on this? Or what are we, what are the relevant times on this? I think, I don't like to put a flat time for review on something because there can be sort of hidden challenges everywhere. But, but certainly communication is key. It could be, it could be ten minutes to turn something like that around. It could be a bit longer, but again, I think communication is important. And if the turnaround time is not something that, turnaround time is longer, we should be able to communicate that.
I would, I would add, Seth, that over the years, we have developed sort of a checklist, almost. It's largely mental, but it's a checklist of things that we look for in standard terms and conditions. So for example, almost every contract that somebody sends you, there will be an indemnification clause, for example, okay? You can't agree to enter into an indemnification clause unless it's modified to limit it to what you're allowed to do under the Michigan Constitution. So we, you know, those are the kind of things we always look for. Indemnification clauses that need to be adjusted, termination clauses. Sometimes you'll get a contract, there won't be a termination date, okay? So you want to make sure that there's a termination date. For municipalities, we generally insist that termination be without cause at the municipality's discretion, perhaps on thirty days' notice or sixty days, under the, whatever's reasonable under the circumstances. But the municipality should always have the ability to back out of the contract without having to prove a breach of contract by the other party, and certainly not agree to indemnification clauses. Many of them also do not have the required civil rights language in them, and so we're making sure that there's language in the contract that says the contracting party will not discriminate on the basis of race, color, sex, creed, et cetera, in hiring, promotion, and so on. Many people, many companies do not put those into contracts, and they need to be in contracts if the other party is a municipality, so.
Okay, thank you. What do you perceive to be the city attorney's role in dealing with the council? And what do you do when an individual council member's actions may be in violation of local, state, or federal law?
So the city attorney, the client of the city attorney is the council. So that's the, that's the first part of the relationship there. And so I'd say first off, the city attorney owes to the council all of the regular duties that an attorney would owe to a client. As far as if a member, if a client is breaking the law in some way, that's a situation that I would say requires some tact. I, so I guess in an example, I've had the situation of representing zoning boards of appeals. And zoning boards of appeals, you'll probably know, are groups of individuals who may not have any legal experience, but they act in the role of a judge when making decisions sometimes. And those decisions that they make, while they are bored often of non-attorneys, they are put to the same scrutiny on appeal that a, that a, an attorney's decision or a, you know, a district court lawsuit might be put to. They're going to look, they're going to get some deference, but if the, if the, if those folks had broken the law in making that decision, that's something that does need to be communicated. And personally, I've talked about this with, when I worked with my dad, I've talked about it with George. I don't know that I've talked about it with you, Richard, but I have.
Not yet.
I guess as an example, I've had times where you have a zoning, zoning board of appeals that makes a decision that is not compliant with the law. I guess I think that's a good example of something where, I'd say specifically, giving someone a permit to do something that they're not allowed to do or that isn't supported under this zoning ordinance would be an example. So in that situation, what I've typically done is send them a letter under the attorney-client privilege, or at least highlight the attorney-lying privilege at the top of the letter, letting them know what they've done and that, and the risks of doing something like that. And I think that's, and that's in a situation where you can sort of easily explain the thing. If it's a, if it's something that's ambiguous, then, you know, maybe not, but this would be specifically like, somebody wants to put a business in a residential zone and wants to go to the ZDA, and somehow they get there, and the ZDA says, yes, that was a legal decision, and really, they're just creating liability for the client. So I guess that's one thing. I usually try to do that by writing letters either to the individual person, if it's an individual person, or to the public body, if it was a body of legal decision. I try to do communication first, I guess.
I would supplement that by saying that in the past, I have run into situations, not with the ZDA, but with runaway council member, shall we say. And I think the best practice is to simply call it out by means of a written communication to the client, which in this case is the city council. So if Mr. Pratt, for example, was doing something illegal as a city council person, my letter would be to the city council. It would be obviously confidential. It would call out Mr. Pratt's action, and either just recommend that the city review that, or, you know, provide me with instructions on what they want us to do in response to that. But under the Open Meetings Act, those things can be handled confidential. I mean, you don't have to air the dirty laundry because Mr. Pratt would be a public official under the Open Meetings Act. If you are looking to review or discipline a public official, he's entitled, he or she's entitled to a closed session. Typically, they ask for that, and so that sort of stuff gets hashed out, you know, in a closed session, but hopefully is resolved. Now, if a city council person or any other municipal person, you know, commits a felony, I'm probably gonna call the sheriff, okay? But I, fortunately, in my forty-four years of practice, that has never happened, so.
Mr. Grabowski?
All right, based on your education, experience, and background, what do you consider to be your strengths in dealing with local government problems? What are your weaknesses?
My strengths and weaknesses?
This is a swat analysis.
Yeah, yeah. I, I'll bet everybody has opinions on my strengths and weaknesses. I think that, uh, you sound like you're dragging, you can talk about your strengths. I, I, I think that I, my strengths are, I would say, interpersonal communication. I think that that's something that I do a good job with. I think my weaknesses would be the organization area. As far as my, I suppose, education, um, I guess I'm not sure how to define that there. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I suppose if I were being really simple, I would say strengths would be, uh, I guess if I, if I had to boil it down, what I usually say is, I try to disagree without being disagreeable is the way I try to go about it. So if there's an issue that, that's being had, I try to, I'd say, in the, in the realm of prosecution, for example, when I'm over there on Wednesday morning prosecuting a misdemeanor for the city police, I try to make sure that, that I'm not treating the defendant as if they're subhuman or something like that. I try to go into that and treat everyone with respect in those situations. And I guess I consider that to be a strength personally, because I think that's something that benefits the client, because I think it's a, it's a visible role, and I think that it's a good way for the city to be viewed. And I guess as far as organizing, or as far as weaknesses go, I would stick with organization. I always think that's my number one weakness, it's always something I'm working on, so.
Jim?
Supplement that, Jim, I mean, just the, just the depth of the bench at Micah Myers. I mean, there's not much that comes up in government that we haven't seen or dealt with in the past. And, you know, Tim has only been in practice, what, nine years, about nine, about nine, ten years? So he doesn't have the same breadth of experience that the other members of the firm have, but, you know, we're, we're four digits away on his phone, and. and, you know, he can bring the whole bench together if the city needs it.
Okay. Okay, what experience do you have, have you had in labor negotiations?
So, I've had a little bit of labor work, but very little. And the reason is because in my experience, my prior firm, we would send people downstate, to somebody downstate. And one of the benefits here at Micah Myers is we've got Nate Wolf, who I believe has been doing labor work for the city. So, as a firm, I believe the firm has a labor.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have a labor and employment division of our firm. Nate Wolf has been your negotiator, I believe, for some time. And Nate, by the way, I should have said this earlier, Nate sensed his apologies. He was going to be here tonight, but another one of his clients scheduled a collective bargaining session for this evening, so he felt he had to go there. But, we've been your labor attorney, Jim.
I know.
Okay, what experience do you have in general employment law?
So, general employment law, I guess, I'm, I'm still taking these questions as me personally and at the firm, because again, I see myself as the applicant here. So, personally, with general employment law, I dabble, but I don't have a ton of experience with it. But, that's another place where we, again, I would put that in the labor category. We even set that down in Grand Rapids. And that's where, as Richard was mentioning, we have our, our labor group down there, and Nate Wolf has been providing that service for the city for.
I'm not sure exactly how long it's been.
What experience do you have with public records and open meetings law?
Another one would be, you have three days.
So, public records, I guess, being the Freedom of Information Act and the Open Meetings Act. So, I have been dealing with those, I suppose, or educating clients on those topics since I started practicing back in, in Michigan, at least in 2015. I think when I worked with my dad, those were a couple of his specialties, and he really enjoyed putting on presentations for clients. And that's something that I've learned, that when you put those presentations on for clients and there's public there, it gives them things to harass you about. So, personally, I don't really love doing those in open meetings, but I have done presentations. I think I even mentioned that when I was talking with you folks a few months ago here. But, yeah, I'd say we, as a firm, and me personally, for my clients that I brought to the firm and the clients that I've adopted since being here, we handle all sorts of FOIA situations that come up. So, you know, if somebody gets a FOIA, "What am I supposed to do with this?" We usually always will remind them of the deadlines for the FOIA response. We'll provide a draft or a full FOIA response for them to use and send to the client. We will, as far as the Open Meetings Act goes, we, for our clients when they need it, we'll provide language for entering into a closed session. We'll provide reminders about how to, how to conduct yourselves in the closed session, and not to make any decisions longer than a closed session. In fact, I guess I, I would consider this one of my areas of strengths because I've been, I've been dealing with those issues for, after about an entire nine years of practicing.
We have also litigated both cases under FOIA and under the Open Meetings Act with other clients. Cities are always getting sued for violating one or the other because they provide for attorney's fees. They're rather common kind of lawsuits, and the plaintiffs bar because they think they can get attorney's fees if they can win from the city. But, if, if the, if the plaintiff in a FOIA case or an Open Meetings Act case seeks damages against the city, typically, your insurance carrier will come in and provide the legal defense for those kinds of cases because they have potential financial impact on the city, and so you're covered by insurance. And one of the, one of the duties of an insurance company under a policy of insurance is a duty to defend, even if they don't have the duty to indemnify. And I have found in my experience, if there's a, if there's a lawsuit started by somebody over a Freedom of Information Act request that they claim we didn't respond to correctly or an Open Meetings Act violation, typically, the insurance carrier or the municipality will step in, provide the defense at no cost, other than whatever your deductibles are. But, in cases where they're seeking equitable relief or something where you don't have insurance coverage, we have defended those pretty successfully.
That's it. My experience with FOIA, it's usually, if, if you've done anything even that could possibly be viewed as wrong, you're going to have to pay somebody $1,000. Give you injunctions saying you're not going to violate FOIA, which can be pretty frustrating from the public body's perspective, where they think they didn't do anything wrong. But, you know, that's typically how those end up, because, you know, the insurance, while they're there to defend it, a lot of times they're maybe not interested.
Yeah, they're not interested, the insurance companies are interested in resolving the case at the less, the smallest cost to the insurance carrier as possible, okay? That's typically the insurance carrier's modus operandi. Not always necessarily in what's in the best interest of the municipality from a policy perspective or from a going-forward perspective. But, they will often try to get the case resolved by throwing money at the plaintiff just to get him to go away.
Okay, do you have any experience in ballot, drafting ballot language?
I do have experience in drafting ballot language. So, I'd say most of my experience has been with village ballot language. And then also, I guess I've drafted a couple of marijuana-related ballot languages that needed to be produced pursuant to a citizen's petitions that were submitted. So, and those ballot languages, from my experience, it can get complicated. There's, it's, it's simple, but it's, it can be dangerous, I guess. There's certain elements that need to be in there that are clearly stated in the law, but then there are, particularly with villages, there are some challenges. But, I, I've drafted, personally drafted many ballot questions myself, I know the firm.
Okay.
I couldn't put enough around there.
Okay, my next question is kind of like a two-part. Do you have any experience in land use planning and zoning requirements?
So, yes. I, for one thing, I guess I, I served on the planning commission up in Long Lake Township in Grand Travers County. I have for about, about five or six years, I think. But, even prior to that, I was helping township clients with land use planning and zoning issues. I'd say those are some of the sort of premier issues for townships generally is, uh... is those, those planning and zoning issues. Because a lot of things end up, that zoning ordinance ends up being the biggest ordinance that most townships will have. So, and I guess my experience with land use planning and zoning has included attending meetings to assist planning commissions in making decisions that are compliant with the law. Attending meetings helps zoning boards of appeal do the same and make sure that their decisions are going to comply with the law. And also, there's elements you need to make sure of in there for both planning and zoning board of appeals decisions. Essentially, you need to, if there's an appeal of one of those decisions, they'll need to, the court will need to determine that the decision wasn't arbitrary. So, while it might seem obvious, one of the important things about those planning and zoning decisions is making sure that the, the public body is considering their findings of fact as they go, so that there's a creative record which will support their decision. Because that record is load-bearing in the sense that it could end up before a circuit judge who has to read it and decide whether this was arbitrary or not. And so, the courts will give deference to those decisions, but they have to be written, they have to be spelled out, and they have to be explained. So, I'd say that's one of the main jobs at, at that ground level. And then I've also had appeals of zoning decisions that I've handled for clients, both in the enforcement realm and then also from the realm of sort of unhappy license, didn't get a license when they thought they should, or didn't get, didn't get to build the structure that they thought they should be able to. So, I'd say those go both ways, but I, I've handled appeals on both of those as well. And for, I, I think that land use and zoning and planning is one of the main areas of expertise for a firm, but that's your example.
Yeah, you kind of answered the other question too, so, anything else you want to add?
Do you want to add anything, Mr.?
Well, I mean, I've had experience drafting zoning ordinances, and, as well as master plans. Now, most municipalities don't look to their attorneys to draft zoning ordinances and master plans anymore. They hire Williams and Works, or, you know, some other engineering firm that has a land use division to get, uh, to get the, to get the background anyway, at least of the, of the master plan. Many of those engineering firms will now also provide you with a draft zoning ordinance based on their master plan. And when that happens, then typically, the client will send those to us to review because they know that the engineering firm is not an attorney, and they are looking for legal advice on the ordinance before it's adopted to make sure that it does conform to the law. And so, that has sort of taken the, the nuts and bolts of the zoning and planning issues out of the legal hands and put it into hands of people that have more of a background. I mean, my background is law school, it's not land use planning. If I wanted to be a land use planner, I would pursue a different career in college, and I'd be working for a Williams and Works or something like that. But, but as Tim indicated, yeah, the firm has, the, the local government practice group of our firm has ten people in it at least. We, we're all familiar with land use and zoning, and have all had all kinds of experience in drafting, in being, enforcing all of those.
I think that's it, if anybody else, Paul, questions? No? Okay, thank you. I think that's it.
Well, I guess any, anything else you want to?
I would, if I, if I can, just to wrap up, I think it would be beneficial to the city to retain Micah Myers as your city attorney for several reasons. Number one, responding to an emergency where only about fifty feet away and can get to the city hall, you know, on a hop, given the jump. I know Tim has been attending staff meetings. You know, we're, we're available to the city and its, its staff very regularly. And if you need us here in the city hall for some reason, as I said, we're just a few steps away. But, more importantly, Micah Myers and Dr. Wilson, Sayler, and Heslin before Micah Myers, we've been the city attorney since Jack Hart got sick back. Dave was going to have to help me, or Jim, with mid-1990s, early 1990s, when Jack Hart started to step away, and we slowly took over Jack's position. But, I mean, we have a basement full of the history of the city of Manistee and the legal history of the city of Manistee that we've continued to maintain. Is a, probably is a valuable library if, if things come up that, you know, needs somebody to go back and dig through the records and find out what happened back in 2000 or 1999. But, and on top of that, we're local. I mean, I don't live in the city, I just live outside of the city. Tim has purchased a, a home in Manistee, so he's a homeowner, a condo owner, I guess technically, in the city of Manistee. So, I mean, we are local people. My family has been here since 1971, so, I mean, we've got a lot of history in Manistee. That's something I think that is unique to our firm and that none of the other firms will be able to bring to you, is that we know, we know Manistee, we know it well, and we love it, that's why we're here.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, very much appreciate the opportunity.
Please, over to you.
Thank you.
It's over, Corey.
Yes.
I asked for anybody to say anything.
Did everyone get the email about the scoring documents?
Yes.
Just use them as needed for discussion, but you don't have to use them. You don't have to completely fill them out, and there's, we'll be collecting them for record retention.
Are we waiting till the end to talk about stuff, or?
I'm sorry?
Do we wait till the end to talk about any of this, or?
Um, that's how we had it set up, but I guess you could, you could. I think she's bringing them up right now, though.
Hello. Absolutely, yes, please.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm going to assume you're Blake.
Yes, I am.
So, thank you for submitting your interest. We're just going to go through, everybody's going to, have a seat, please. Go through and ask you a couple of questions, and then we'll give you time at the end, if we have it. Do you want to say anything to start? Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Blake Kaplan, I'm a shareholder at Bloom Sluggett. I'm joined by Jeff Sluggett. Thank you for taking the time to be with us, we would really appreciate it. Um, I, I just would like to quickly highlight, or would you like me to go at the end?
Um, no, go ahead, go ahead, yeah. Nope, you're good.
Okay, I'd just like to quickly highlight a few things that make Bloom Sluggett unique and allow us to provide a high level of service to our municipal clients. You know, first, Bloom Sluggett is a, primarily a public sector law firm. We do not do public sector as a component of our practice, it is our primary area of focus. So, we focus on the representation of cities, townships, and villages. And I think that provides two, two benefits to our clients. First, we are a subject matter expert in municipal law. We stay in touch with, with what's going on in municipal law, cutting edge. And that allows us to provide our experience, that we can draw from the communities we serve. So, for example, short-term rentals. Instead of me having to reinvent the wheel, if the city comes to us with a short-term rental question, we can draw on our experience working with all of our other communities to assist Manistee. Second, since we're not a full-service law firm, we don't run into issues where we have a conflict or interest, where we have to retease ourselves. We do not undertake the representation of clients who could be adverse to, to any municipality, not just municipalities we represent. That's just part of our ethos as a part of sector law firms, we don't undertake representation that could be adverse to a municipality, we would like to set precedent. It means our clients are a municipality. We also utilize a team approach. So, while we, we focus on municipal law, there are attorneys at Bloom Sluggett who do municipal litigation, Michigan tax tribunal matters, and even more, more discreet things like election law FOIA. So, so if the city approaches us with an election law FOIA matter... Jeff Sluggett would, would assist, be the assistant point of contact, but, you know, I would like to emphasize the team approach. You'll be, the city will be supported by a team of dedicated municipal attorneys.
So, the person sitting at our meeting would be who?
Would be me.
Would be you? Okay. Thank you very much. So, then I would ask you, how do you prioritize staff and council requests for, for your office?
Um, I guess, I, I would, I would ask the person assigned you to what they would like done first. Does that answer the question?
Yeah. Pretty short, but yeah. So, and I think you just half answered it, but, so you, you do that to ensure we get a timely answer by asking us what we need, right? And then where do you, how do you respond in an emergency? How do we use you in an emergency situation?
Um, I, all of my clients have my cell phone number and they can call me twenty-four hours a day and some of them do. So, I, I always make myself available to my clients. I consider that part of my job responsibilities.
Could you give me an example when you've had to respond to an emergency on behalf of a client?
Um, I, I have received calls prior to legislative body meetings where they needed my best immediate answer to, to a situation.
Okay.
In order to assist them at the meeting that would be occurring that night.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I jump in for just a second? I have a priority question. Typically, at least in our experience, it's really a function of what the community wants to do. So, if you're going to decide obviously the priorities are, and then the, the other issue is how are those going to be communicated? In most of the communities we work with, it's typically through the city manager. It doesn't have to be, but it's typically through the city manager. There are some communities where that's not the case, where a client directs it from their hometown or mayor or even individual council members. That's, obviously, that's your choice. But typically, most of the communications start through the city, through you, to your city manager, and then to the principal county.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
What is your experience with marijuana licensing?
We have worked with many of our client communities on marijuana issues, both at the regulatory level and on his own side. So, we have, we have extensive experience and that's, I think, one of the key areas where we stay out front of where law is and what's going on in our communities so we can provide our clients with the most up-to-date advice.
Please elaborate on your firm's experience in criminally prosecuting misdemeanor cases.
Absolutely. We have two attorneys who full-time handle criminal prosecution and code enforcement matters. So, they handle misdemeanor criminal violations and our, and our city clients who enforce those.
Thank you.
Okay. Please elaborate on your firm's experience in, oh, that's what you just did, sorry. Wrong question. Um, please elaborate on your firm's experience with nuisance abatement, blighted or unsafe structured tax assessments.
Sure. Yeah, we have extensive experience in that area. That seems to be a common concern for many communities about this housing and this type of, type of property. So, as I mentioned, we have two attorneys who specialize in code enforcement criminal prosecution, who do the, the day-to-day corporate work. We have done a lot of work recently with getting cities and villages to have their ordinances updated. I think that can play a big role in how successful those prosecutions are. Do you have an up-to-date light ordinance?
We've, like you jumped in.
Yeah.
We've also, typically, most of your fight situations are going to be, you're looking to your ordinance, you're going to cite, oftentimes it's a municipal infraction for that type of violation. You're going to have, in most communities, repeat offenders. And there are, at least in our experience, there are times where particularly against a zoning ordinance violation, for example, you can prosecute it through a circuit court action where you file a form of complaint, gives you an opportunity to do some discovery, it raises the stakes. And sometimes in the case of repeat offenders, that's our recommendation as well. Obviously, it's the city's choice in terms of proceed, but there are times where that may be appropriate as well.
Okay. Thank you. Describe your experience working with brownfield redevelopment authorities, brownfield plans or development and reimbursement agreements with tax abatements such as Oprah, CRA, NEZ, IFT, et cetera.
Um, we assist many of our clients with, with brownfield matters. So, we assist their brownfield redevelopment authority in how to evaluate those plans. We draft reimbursement agreements, dealing with some of the more complicated plans, particularly in this day and age where you now have the expansion of the incentives, some sort of housing development. There's been an explosion, explosion in brownfield work that I think most of our clients are sitting there having brownfield requirements.
Yeah, we're working in our, so, we're working in a couple of communities right now where we're actually, some of the new legislation that's very recent, like two, three, seven, we're working with, we're, we're working very, we're very engaged in some of those several communities we're working with because housing shortages are an issue. I mean, certainly not in any particular size community, it seems to be common almost everywhere, right?
What is the expected turnaround time for reviewing standard terms and conditions that apply to a variety of services such as software, payments, consulting, et cetera?
Um, you know, it, it can vary depending on the complexity and how, some construction agreements are long and the project is detailed, it could take three to four days. I mean, if it's a, if it's a short project, it could be a twenty-four hour turnaround. I would consider appropriate, and that's what we strive for.
Okay. Thank you. What do you perceive to be the city attorney's role in dealing with the council? And what do you do when an individual council member's actions may be in violation of local, state, or federal law?
Well, I mean, our, our primary role as city attorney is to provide the city strategic risk of guidance. We're not policymakers. Our, our role is to tell you what the law is, explain how the law works in a particular circumstance, and kind of help you develop a policy. So, our role is strategically or basically help, help council and city staff understand risks, options, that sort of thing. As far as the second part of your question, you know, I think the first answer applies. Our role is to help the council and city staff understand their legal options, you know, what the law requires of them, even in complicated situations where a council member may not be complying with the law.
Thank you. Mr. Krosky.
Okay. Based on your education, experience, and background, what do you consider to be your strengths in dealing with local government problems? And what are your weaknesses?
Um, well, I mean, I think our, our strength as a firm, my strength personally, is that I am dedicated to public sector law. That's primarily the clients I serve. So, I can draw on a lot of experience in other communities to, to assist the city. I can help you understand what other communities are doing, you know, what your legal options are. That allows us to provide very cost-effective, effective service. And I think our, our, our primary drawback is that we're located in Grand Rapids and that is a, there's a distance between the city and Grand Rapids. That being said, you know, we will make ourselves available in person at all of your, your council meetings and work out whatever sort of arrangement is, is best suited for city staff for us to be here in person as much as, as much as necessary.
I'm going to supplement with that if I can, if I can. Blake's already said it, but I want to emphasize it. We are unique in the, in our emphasis on public sector law. That's why we were created. When my partner and I started, we were both with larger firms before, but they were full-service firms. That's what they, is like, how they like to describe themselves, which is fine, except public sector arena is different. You, and you either get that or you don't get that. That's my personal opinion. And we are passionate, every attorney that puts at our firm comes in knowing this is what we do. We are public sector attorneys, which is part of the reason, Blake said this before, we won't represent private parties against other municipalities, even if we have no relationship with those municipalities. It's just not, it's not who we are. We like what we do, we're passionate about what we, what we do, it's interesting. I love what I do. I love getting to do municipal law. I can't think of another area of the law I can practice. And I do think that sets us apart. I don't think, I can, I can think of very few firms that I think are, that's committed to exclusively a public sector practice as a, for good or ill, but.
What experience have you had in labor negotiations?
Well, we have entered our firm, who practices in the labor and employment area. That is an area where, where oftentimes our clients utilize outside counsel and we work collaboratively with. Another area, for example, with municipal finance where, where we would work collaboratively with outside counsel to provide services, depending on exactly what the issue is and what the city's needs, what are the circumstances.
The, the attorney Blake's talking about, his name's Andy Gordon, and he's, if you look at our website or if you look at the literature we sent, he's in there. Andy, his principal practice is labor, although he does do some litigation as well. He has limited experience relative to what I'd call three twelve bargaining units. So, he has some. In fact, he's working on, he's negotiating right now with a three twelve unit. But it's something, you know, like everything else, you have to develop it and you, you grow your experience. So, we have relationships with other firms that we can draw on if needed, and we do from time to time. But as Blake said, I think, at least in terms of pure bargaining unit work, that's distinguished from more traditional human resource and labor and employment work. It's probably an area that we're still developing. In municipal finance, we don't, we just don't practice. We do special assessments and things like that, but we don't, we, we do nothing with respect to the issuance of warrants or, or prefer to work with basis, including Chris and Myers, but we don't do that with ourselves.
Okay. What experience do you have in general employment law?
Um, yeah, as, as Jeff mentioned, Andy Gordon, the attorney in our office specializes in labor and employment. He has handled a wide variety of employment matters for our clients. EEOC complaints, lawful discrimination complaints. He's very good at guiding clients to termination issues. So, we have a, a bit experienced employment attorney in our office who's very capable in that area.
What experience do you have with public records and open meanings law?
Um, I think this is one of the bread and butter issues of a municipal attorney is the Freedom of Information Act and records retention type laws, sunshine laws. So, we have a high degree of experience with that. And, you know, we, I, I brought up the, the idea of the election matters FOIAs. Typically, as you guys are probably aware, you know, groups are coming into the light work, submitting FOIA requests to just pepper in every municipality. So, typically, we'll see ten or fifteen of our clients who get those particular requests. So, we can kind of really quickly get together what is the best possible response, you know, for the, for the clerk and for the city under those circumstances.
Yeah, it's interesting. Every community is unique, but at the same time, clearly, things come in waves. So, you know, you won't be the only one getting the election FOIA request. All the other, all the other clerks in the, you know, in the state are getting the same kind of thing. So, again, to the extent we represent a number of municipalities we do, I think that's advantageous to really benefit of what we are doing and what we are targeting for, to the areas as well. And then we can apply that as well from Manistee and the other communities we're working in too. So, there are, they're off on a tangent here. We, there's a real variety of our clients in terms of municipalities who represents a fairly large and sophisticated cities. We represent some very tiny rural townships and some, you know, sized villages. We represent urban townships. So, I'm way off, way off key, I apologize, but I think that's, again, that's something that we're going to take potential for.
Do you have experience in drafting ballot language?
Uh, we, we do. That's, that's one of my areas.
Okay.
In, in, given election season, we may draft between forty-five and fifty ballot proposals, sometimes more. So, so we do have a lot of experience in that area.
Okay. And then do you have experience in land use planning and zoning requirements?
Uh, yes, we do. I, I think land use and zoning planning is one of the more difficult issues that, that municipalities have to confront. So, we, we do have a lot of experience in that area from writing zoning ordinances to assisting with complicated zoning applications, contentious variances, contentious special land uses. We also have experience of dealing with appeals to zoning board decisions in the circuit courts. So, we, we have a high degree of experience.
Okay.
If I can.
Oh, go ahead.
At any given time in our office, you're going to have at least a dozen or so of issues being handled by someone on behalf of some client. We have some clients who are very, very aggressive and proactive in terms of their land uses and, and there are others who are just reacting to particular circumstances in the office and who's I mentioned. But it's, that's, that's a constant in the office, so.
Okay. And you guys got through that so quick. I mean, does anybody else have?
No, I just have, how many units or governor you personally responsible for and they have to meet on the first and third Tuesday of the month? Is it going to be a conflict with meetings if that were you?
That was my question.
Oh, I, I did check that there would be no conflict for the first and third Tuesday of the month.
Okay. And how many do you have personally that you represent?
Um, as the principal, two, but as, as the senior assistant, assisting other attorneys in the firm, I think totally nine.
Yeah, Blake's being self-effacing. He actually is the principal captain for that. Realistic, but.
Okay.
So, you would be a principal here if this firm was hired?
For me, for me personally, there's probably about fifteen.
Okay.
I had a question. So, earlier you had mentioned for your experience with labor negotiations that sometimes you'll refer clients to outside counsel. So, can you expand on that answer just a little bit on like what, if you were to refer us to outside counsel, what would your role look like? Would you still be involved in that process? For example, in my mind, I'm thinking like, what if outside counsel recommended something that you didn't necessarily think was in our best action? So, is it kind of like you just hand us off or are you still involved and you'd say, let's get another opinion or something like that? So, maybe.
I mean, ultimately, it would, it would depend on what, what the, was best suited to the situation. You could stay involved to whatever degree was helpful. There are some areas that are highly, highly suited.
Is it gonna be a conflict with meetings if that were you?
That was my question.
Oh, I did check that there would be no conflict for the first and third Tuesday of the month.
Okay. And how many do you have personally that you represent?
As the principal, two. But as the senior assistant, assisting other attorneys in the firm, I think totally maybe ninety.
Yeah, Blake's being self-effacing. He actually is the principal captain for me. Realistic approach.
You would be a principal here if this firm was hired?
Okay. For me personally, there's probably about fifteen.
Okay.
I had a question. So earlier you had mentioned for your experience with labor negotiations that sometimes you'll refer clients to outside counsel. So can you expand on that answer just a little bit on like what... If you were to refer us to outside counsel, what would your role look like? Would you still be involved in that process? For example, in my mind, I'm thinking like, what if outside counsel recommended something that you didn't necessarily think was in our best action? So is it kind of like you just hand us off or are you still involved and you'd say, "Let's get another opinion" or something like that? So maybe...
I mean, ultimately, it would depend on what was best suited to the situation. You could stay involved to whatever degree was helpful. There are some areas that highly, highly specialize in labor negotiation. Environment, so right now it's really another where there's not a whole lot of attorneys that do that. And it's just in our... it'd be the city's best interest to refer that particular matter to that attorney. But we would stay involved to whatever degree necessary to make sure there was a good outcome. And I guess, but we try to be cost-conscious too.
Yeah.
That's genuinely, again, we think it's part of our D N A. I want to be as practical as I can. If we recognize that there's an expert out there who is better suited for a particular issue than we are... And I'm gonna use bond, although labor probably would apply under a set of circumstances. Sure, I can be included and I can be copied, so I have a general idea of what's going on. But as a practical matter, I'm probably not going to interpose myself and just because otherwise I shouldn't do it. I'm going to assume, for example, if we bring in a bond attorney and the attorney is recommending a particular type of bond, for example, I'm not gonna second-guess the bond attorney. Stay in your lane. My lane is general municipal, but there are some segments of that that don't practice. So, and I mean, we can always look over their shoulder. Some attorneys will do that. I think to some extent you should be paying twice and sometimes you can do it.
Right. No, I appreciate the response. Thank you.
Your fee structure, you have a... you work with the city to keep costs down by using virtual meetings. Do you have those very often?
Well, I mean, for a while, it was extensive use of virtual meetings. Now, I think, yes, we do. We do frequently use virtual meetings. It's a great tool. Use Teams or Zoom to have a virtual meeting for small matters.
Can I give you an example? So one of our clients is Sutton Township Fire Department. It's a sorship of three different communities. They had an org meeting earlier this week and they're based in Sutton. So for us, that's about a forty-five minute drive. The attorney, who was actually the lawyer, the attorney that's working at it had written a complaint that we're going into closed sessions. The only reason he would have been involved in the meeting would have been just for the closed session, nothing else. Our suggestion in that case was, more they plan to come down, if that's what you want. It made more sense though just to bring him in, in that case telephonically, so that he can go into closed session, we can talk about the opinion, answer your questions, done. So that's kind of how to use it. That's how we try to use it. I used to work at Sutton's Bay on some matters and it was the same thing. Didn't make sense for me to drive, at least from my perspective, to Sutton's Bay for a half hour meeting. If it's a discreet matter, I would encourage you, at least in terms of committees or something like that, if you want participation, I would consider you... I would encourage you to stick with it. Again, it's saving money.
That's good to know.
Anybody else have... you guys have... you went through that so quick, so you have time if you wanna add anything else.
No, again, we really appreciate your time. Thank you for reviewing our proposal and taking the time to meet with us. Yeah, again, Blue Suck is very passionate about public sector law. We have a privilege to represent the city. We really appreciate the communities we work for and again, really welcome you to represent Manistee.
Two things. Hopefully I won't ruin what you just said. First, we very much, we sincerely want to be part of the team. That's how we tend to be ourselves. We want you, if you would decline, to view us as part of the team. Secondly, I think it's important that we emphasize just how much what an honor it would be to represent Manistee. And I'm not just saying, "Manistee is an important city. We want the largest communities around the mission." That was good. That's a big deal, you know, in the same way to the rivers of South Lake, for example. That's a big deal, in our opinion. Cal, which is very large, and that's a big deal. Manistee would be the same if I wanted, so we very much want the opportunity to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one, okay. Just one.
Do you want to send them waters?
Yeah.
Freezing. I'll hurry up, I've got a sweater. There's water on.
Glad I brought mine up.
Hello.
Hello.
So thank you for coming in. We're just gonna go through and ask you a couple of questions each. And we've got plenty of time, so wanna start and say anything?
Sure. I mean, you guys have seen the proposal, know a little bit about me. My name's Matt Cross. I'm a partner at Cummings, McClory, Davis, and Nacho. Been practicing about eleven years. Not much beyond what you can see from the proposal. I mean, I can tell you that just a little bit about my career. I've been representing public entities for a long time. It kind of started as, you know, my first couple of years, maybe thirty percent of my time was doing that, but realized, because I grew up in local government, my dad was choir chief. I grew up going to these meetings and being in and around local government, so I knew this is what I wanted to do. So it's gone from thirty percent to fifty percent, and now it's... this is all good. So I represent a number of cities, more so in the Charleboy, in the county area. Yeah, I mean, we do... I'm sure there's gonna be some of your questions, but I mean, there's not much that you guys would need done, that we haven't already done. I was looking at your proposal, I mean, specifically the... I think you'd be hard pressed to find someone who's got more exposure to dealing with marijuana entities than I do. I spent the last probably three, four years involved in some pretty contentious litigation involving a few marijuana companies. So that's probably where I would think I stand out from some of the other, certain other firms. Yeah, there's really... I'll leave it to you guys for the questions, but I mean, there's... Anything you guys need, probably something I deal with on a daily basis. I was just in criminal pre-trials most of this morning, so.
Okay.
So assuming you would be our principal, then if we hired your firm, you would be the guy?
Correct.
That'd be right. So in that category or capacity, how do you prioritize staff and council member requests?
Yeah, so that's... I kind of leave it up to the city to determine how communication flows to me because I know some communities get a little frustrated when I get three or four different versions of the same question from different council members. So like, it would be obviously up to you how we deal with that, but I mean, typically questions from other cities, whether it's the same manager. But that said, I mean, I... there are plenty of my city council members that just call me on my cell phone. I'm always available. I mean, it's... if I'm off, if I'm on the phone, if I'm busy, I usually call my clients back within thirty minutes to go out. Yeah, and if you guys need something, you know, my door's always open. You're always in.
Give me an example of when you've had to respond to an emergency request from a municipality you represent? And how do you do that?
Emergency requests. I guess I... maybe I've been a little fortunate, as Blake, that I can't think of any emergencies. I mean, plenty of times when I think council members may feel like it's an emergency and really the topic's not coming up until Tuesday or a meeting, but I can't really think of a time I've had do that for a city I've represented. I mean, there are occasionally instances that a lot of the work we do litigation-wise, we get cases through the NMRMA, which represents like Madison County or insurance of Madison County. So there've been a few times where like there's a jail death or something and we'll have to respond to that. We have to take care of it. But I mean, if it's a true emergency, I mean, it's really never the case that I can't drop what I'm doing to respond to a true emergency. Anything could be an officer-involved shooting. I mean, that's obviously a big concern. We do a lot of, I mean, we've got a lot of litigation involving law enforcement. So that's probably the only emergency truly that I could think of, but I mean, if it's a, you know, it's a jail death and then I think we were there, I don't know, within twelve, twelve hours to help sort of triage and get all the records and recordings together.
We call your cell phone and you yourself would respond to our need? Or you'd have somebody else do it for you?
No, no. Everyone, I mean, it's... luckily it hasn't been a problem yet, but everyone keeps my cell phone.
Okay. Thank you.
You can kind of skip yours, Wes, if you went on marijuana.
How about you elaborate on your firm's experience in criminally prosecuting misdemeanor cases?
Sure. So that's relatively... I'm one of the few people in the firm who do it and this is a relatively new part of my practice, but currently do misdemeanor prosecutions for the Village of Mackinac City and Chaboy County, city of Chaboy, and East Jordan and Charleboy County. I haven't had any misdemeanors come up in Point City, but yeah, we can handle those. I mean, it gets... it gets a little... this is hard to explain to some police chiefs and some council members, but it's really hard to have a municipal attorney do that in a way that makes economic sense for the community because, you know, so we do like a lot of O U I first. That's a misdemeanor. Understand, we get not only the police department gets the cost of contesting, but also the cost of prosecution. Sometimes it is their first O U I, they may not want, because that could be up to, you know, five hundred thousand bucks. Sometimes it's a reward. Like I run into that a lot and sometimes it's a losing proposition money-wise for the community. But we do our best to, because the fact is, and I'm sure any attorney would tell you this, ninety-five plus percent of civil and criminal cases are going to resolve before trial. So what I try to do basically is just handle that as efficiently as possible and sort of... that means, okay, I'll review the body cam, I'll review the reports, but like, you know, we go through the arraignment, pre-trial, final pre-trial, and I kind of wait until that last moment to see if that case is going to resolve, because if it does, you know, I can put maybe two hours into it and the city, village, whatever comes out on top. But, you know, you've handled, I don't know, probably the last year, twenty cases of a mix of misdemeanors. I couldn't tell you exactly how many misdemeanors. Probably about half. But yeah, we're soon prepared to try when we need to, but the goal just to really make it accessible for you all is to burn through your police budget, just to try to resolve it as quickly and efficiently as possible. Obviously making sure people who are broken in law are held accountable, but yeah.
Thank you.
I wish I were on.
Question.
Okay. So please elaborate on your firm's experience with nuisance abatements, like blighted or unsafe structures or tax assessment.
So I'll kind of handle those in different pieces of tax assessment I'll handle separately. But yeah, nuisance issues come up all the time. I mean, everything from haul grass to trash in the front yard. Yeah, we've, I mean, we've done everything from the initial notice of violation. Different ordinances provide different procedures for how to deal with those. But in one of my communities, it's like a notice and then a word abate and then it's like final initial citation. Yeah, we've handled that. I've set up a municipal violation bureau, so that's like a sort of alternative path for the city, village, whoever to adjudicate it. They can only accept responsibility if anyone wants to deny responsibility or have an explanation, they have to go to the court, but that's an easy way to kind of cut the court out, so you get all of the fines. But we've handled all that from initial, you know, writing the tickets, formal hearings to... I don't know if we've had to do any appeals yet. Usually after there's a finding responsibility, people just take it and haul the grass. We've, you know, we've gotten equitable orders from the court that allow us to go in and do it because some people either don't have the resources to do it, or they just don't want to do it sometimes. But, you know, we've gotten orders from the court to remove trash ourselves and charge the owner the expense of it. So yeah, so done plenty, plenty of those. Tax assessments, yeah, that's, I mean, they don't come up terribly often for the cities I represent. I mean, I do have a couple right now, but that's kind of rare. We've handled Michigan tax, you know, matters before too. But, you know, it's case-dependent. Like, I mean, if we're talking about like our assessor, their proposed value is like maybe twenty, thirty thousand dollars, there's not much... You know, we'll usually feel comfortable handling those and just like, "Well, we'll figure it out. We'll find some middle ground." Usually we'll get an independent assessment kind of in somewhere in the middle. But for bigger, like we have one right now, which is in Charleboy County, that's, I mean, they're discrepancy of like ten, fifteen million dollars. So in that scenario, we have a firm that we've used a few times before that... And they're, I mean, rated comparable to ours, but they're subject matter experts and they can handle things more efficiently. So there may be some times where I'll recommend that. But what I generally do, like this has only come up thankfully a few times, but when I do have to recommend hiring the outside counsel, I don't build that task anymore. Like I kind of just step back, let that person do it, and I will kind of be like the intermediary to sort of translate to the councils and commission, "Okay, this is what they're doing, this is where things are in the process." But at that point, if I've had to kick it off to someone else, I'm not going to attract you guys for me to kind of like, you know, stand in the wings and watch.
Thank you. Describe your experience working with brownfield redevelopment authorities or brownfield plans or development reimbursement agreements with tax abatements such as Oprah, CRA, NEZ, I F T, et cetera.
Sure. So the first one I think I worked on was when I was assistant city attorney to the city of Petoskey. They had a couple pretty good brownfield projects when I was there. Maple Blocks was one of them. I can't remember the other one, but, excuse me, that involved us sort of looking at the development agreement, dealing with the brownfield authority because the city of Petoskey had ones who were dealing with accounting brownfield authority. Some other experience just recently, a couple months ago, Boyne City is looking at some brownfield projects. So definitely have experience looking through relevant agreements, dealing with brownfield authorities, dealing with pilots and things like that. So yeah, I think that's one of those things that doesn't come up terribly often. I think it's probably gonna, you know, happen more often in a lot of communities because we have so many antiquated, just sort of lighted buildings that need to be repurposed. So what I know, like even now, brownfield has expanded quite a bit to apply more of just that sort of, rehabilitating old buildings. Yeah, I would say three or four. We have another project right now, East Jordan, that's very early days. But yeah, just looked over one of those last week, actually, so that was three or four projects.
What is the expected turnaround time for reviewing standard terms and conditions that apply to a variety of services such as software, payments, and consulting, et cetera?
Those are usually turned around pretty quickly. Like I have one, I think I'll give you an actual measure. I'd say like forty-eight hours. Sometimes, you know, I'd say at the tops, but like I have one community, sometimes I don't quite know why they like don't give me like their spectrum bill and I'm like, "I'll tell you what it says," but it's like, you know, it's a spectrum. We're not gonna like really be able to negotiate terms. So it's... well, they don't take terribly long to review because most of that language is boiling plate. I've looked at it several times before, so it's usually pretty quick for those types of standard requirements.
Thank you. What do you perceive to be the city attorney's role in dealing with the council? And what do you do when an individual council member's actions may be in violation of local, state, or federal law?
So the first part of your question, I mean, I kind of, I mean, you guys, the ones you elected. So I don't weigh in, I've had previous examples before, like is this a good idea, is this a bad idea? I don't deal with good, bad. It's legal, legal, defensible. Like I'm just there to help you guys bring your vision, you know, to life in the city of Madison D. And that's, that's really, yeah, to try to help you get there correctly, and that's about it. I don't really weigh in on whether you should take a different approach. I mean, unless obviously you're approaching it the wrong way from a legal standpoint or procedures you've overlooked. But yeah, that's, I mean, that's basically what I see my goal to be. It's like, we're on the same team, we want the same thing, we want good things for the city of Madison D. I'm just here to help you accomplish that. So but yeah, things often, I actually do have an example of perhaps one of those scenarios right now that I'll move the community out of. But like it's usually someone who reports a fellow council member, you know, something that they have done. I mean, I don't remember if your charter includes this or not, but this other community does. There's a specific mechanism that allows city council to either investigate itself or to appoint usually the city attorney to conduct a destination. I'm actually in the process of one of those right now. So that's typically how I would handle it. I mean, there's in the past I've dealt with, I would say illegal activity, but like conflicts of interest, that comes up fairly often. People kind of, I'm not as familiar, I have my finger on the pulse of the community, I don't know where everyone has interests. So it's, I don't always know if there's a potential conflict of interest. So I've done a lot of those investigations in the past as well. Well, yeah, generally I'll conduct an investigation in a closed session to discuss it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, based on your education, experience, and background, what do you consider to be your strengths in dealing with local government problems? What are your weaknesses?
Strengths, I mean, I think it'd be hard for us to call any of the clients I currently represent or previously represented, because I wasn't, I ain't long enough. I mean, it doesn't, I've dealt with some pretty big personalities. So I would say my ability to kind of put ego aside, just get along with everyone and just sort of understand, you know, working well together and trying to get to the same, you know, the same goal. I mean, that's, that's, I think that's probably my greatest strength. I mean, weakness, I mean, you know, it's, I don't know, that's always, you know, you always expect that question when you go on an interview, but for some reason after, you know, twenty years of interviewing, I still don't really know how to answer it. I mean, it's, I guess, I mean, occasionally with the number of communities I represent, I mean, there are times where like I'm important, it's hard to get ahold of me. But I'm pretty good, as long as people don't mind. I have return calls after hours. I usually try to be as available as I can be. But you know, it's, the reality is, I mean, there are some communities that, I love the communities I represent, but thankfully they don't need me every day. So like you have to have a lot of fires and fires. So sometimes, I mean, it's sort of unavoidable for us. People like me do a lot of this city attorney work, but you gotta have five, six clients that, you know, sometimes this one's hot, sometimes you won't hear from this one for a month. So so I'd say weakness, sometimes it is a little difficult to get ahold of me. This via email, but like I said, everyone gets my cellphone, so if you call me, I mean, I text a lot, I have some counselors too. So when I'm at deposition, you need something urgently, hey, I'll call you in twenty minutes. So I did the typical interview thing, it turned out weakness and strength, I guess, but that's, that's about all I got.
What experience have you had in labor negotiations?
Labor negotiation, that's another one of those things. We've done it, I've done it a couple times before with the police, the police union. But generally, I mean, that's the type of thing, I mean, usually, well, I'll just say historically, we've used outside counsel for that, for labor negotiations. But I mean, it's something we've done before, it's just a, it's just a very, I can't remember the last time, probably three, four years since we've had to do that. But that's about how often those contracts are being negotiated.
What experience do you have in general employment law?
Deal with that, I mean, we've done not only employment law, just general guidance, we've litigated several. Those come up probably once every year. So we've gone to the FMA and things like that about determination cases. So we not only provide general guidance on labor issues, and I think that litigation background is sort of helpful, gives us a little bit more insight about the way of litigation. But yeah, we certainly, we do that all the time, whether it's, you know, sick leave issues, that comes up fairly often. We still believe we're not dealing with people's, whether they should get paid time off or leave during COVID. So like, you know, that comes up fairly often, and we're definitely well suited to like guide something in that area.
What experience do you have with public records and open meetings law?
Yeah, that's, as you probably predicted, that's something that comes up almost on a weekly basis. We get questions about it. You know, we've done everything from some of the smaller communities we represent, even though they have designated FOIA coordinator, that kind of scares me sometimes, the things that they don't know and the things that they produce or things that they withhold. So yeah, FOIA issues come up fairly often, as do OMA issues. I've given a few trainings to the communities on both topics too. So yeah, and again, through that work with the MMRMA, we litigate a lot of those cases. I mean, I have two OMA cases right now, so definitely that comes up all the time.
Do you have experience in ballot drafting?
Oh, yeah, I just did that, I did that for Tonsbury, because I live in County. Yeah, that's, it usually is like village language, you know, we'll deal with that every once in a while. And actually, twice I've had to deal with litigation surrounding the ballot initiatives. Another marijuana related thing, it was, I could, you know, probably the rest of your evening, telling you stories about some of my runs with marijuana companies. But anytime someone does something that threatens their market share, like in Katski, we have dispensaries north and south of town in tribal land. We've had, we had twice valid initiatives to legalize marijuana within the city. And each time that, that dispensary that had locations north and south of town challenged me. So I had to defend the city clerk's approval of the petitions twice, once successfully, once unsuccessfully. But yeah, so I have probably more than, more than most municipal attorneys familiarity with the election law and how it processes, ballot initiatives, how to craft the village language. I mean, that's pretty much dictated in the statute, there's not much, there's not a lot of that we have.
Do you have experience in land use planning and zoning requirements?
I do, yeah. One of the clients that probably keeps me the busiest is Osceola County land use zoning. Because they do the zoning for a lot of the smaller townships in Osceola County. So lots of, and they've got one of the most complicated zoning words I've ever seen. But so a lot of interpretation, a lot of, you know, formal hearings we filed, we've kind of filed lawsuits before for nuisances, to evade nuisances. Yeah, one of the, one of the things, this is probably one of my favorite stories in the last few years, but short term allergies is like a big, probably still is in Katski. But we had someone, that was a land use issue, we had a handful of licenses that we were giving out to people. But this guy was just kind of thumbing his nose at the city. Because the way he looked at it, we kept issuing tickets for a hundred dollars, but he was renting out for four hundred bucks a night. So he's like, okay, keep issuing. So we ended up taking him to court and the judge, I couldn't believe this, but because there's, most ordinances will say that each day is a separate violation. And most judges are like, no, we're just going to charge him two hundred bucks. This judge, every single day, this guy rented it, ended up imposing fifteen thousand dollars in fines. And ended up, because the guy just was like very, well, turned up in the hearing, ended up throwing him to jail. But so that's a rare case, but you know, lots of, I've dealt with everything from just, you know, issues with fences that are creeping in setbacks and, you know, language things like, like short term rentals. I mean, that's, yeah, that comes up fairly often. The PUD plan, our big site that I review, I'll go through that with his own wards and commissions that they ask for.
Anybody else have any more?
I do, always. Two of your references are professional acquaintances and friends of mine. I wonder when I speak to them, would they speak candidly about you or guardedly? That's Patrick Wyman and Brett Bible.
Brett, I think would speak candidly, I love Brett. Brett's like, he's, that case has been frustrating him and I've been, but getting him to Brett has been, I do talk to him all the way here. But yeah, I think they would speak candidly and I hope they'd say good things about me. Pat, I mean, I don't work with Pat super often, like I met Pat a few years ago. He just needed an opinion on a land use issue up there. That was very, very strange. And I've actually now run into a few times where someone was creeping onto publicly owned land. So I just, I did a opinion letter for Pat and then, you know, fast forward a year later, they were looking for some of the prosecution work. So he hooked me up with Chief Woods there in Point City. So I don't have a lot of day to day or week to week interaction with Pat, but Brett, I have talked to you fairly often. I think he can tell you, he can tell you what kind of guy I am.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for, okay, thank you.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, I mean, I guess that's, I guess that's it. I mean, I talked to Kelly about it a little bit, so it sounds like you guys, I mean, is it just you haven't lived this out in a while? And you've just kind of seen where else is?
Yes, yes.
I have to break my chance. I would tell you, I know Tim, don't know him super well, but he's a good guy, he's a good attorney. So I mean, if you guys end up staying with him, I think you're just fine, so.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Am I good to keep going?
Yes.
Okay. So now we'll do consideration of authorizing staff to negotiate a contract with a successful city attorney candidate's firm. So we could have a discussion about it and go from there. Anybody want to start?
I guess I have one question. Has, what is staff's opinion in regards to these structures from each firm, because they're a little different?
The plan was to negotiate one. I think Micah Myers was much, was higher than it currently is. So with the other two firms, I think we're looking for, kind of looking at the hourly, but also something where we could get some just standard work done. I do think we have to look at, you know, if we're going to have the attorney here, what that's going to look like, or do we do more remote options depending? So there's things like that we have to work through.
Sort of piggyback on Mr. Pratt. So if we pick somebody tonight to go into negotiations, that will come back to us?
Correct.
Again, okay.
I guess I'd like to just go through all three of them, just kind of evaluate, first thing, my thoughts on all three of them.
Okay.
I thought the first firm, Micah Myers, I thought that it was like interviewing a guy just out of college.
Yeah.
The firm is, he kept referencing the firm, but him as a person, knowing he's our lead primary attorney, just did not carry the day.
That was disappointing.
The second firm was awesome, did a great job. But man, the third firm was even better. And I think that the third firm, Mr. Cross, I think there are ties to Northern Michigan, and the community of Northern Michigan is a huge selling point. And he had, he didn't have any hesitation on any answer at all. The guy in the middle was a great guy, Blake, but he had some things he wasn't familiar with. This, there was nothing that this guy didn't have dial in according to what he had to say. And I know his references, and they're both were former police chiefs, and I've worked with them for fifteen years. And I know that if they would say good things about him, it would make me feel good about that too. He didn't put him down there for no good reason. So for me, he was absolutely my lead candidate going into this.
I guess the question I have that kind of came up with Micah Myers, which I do think was a good point. So if we, if we make the decision to switch firms, obviously we could ask for our records, right? Because they have, I mean, they have that history.
That's my question.
But I guess like, I don't know that we have copies of all that here. Typically you don't, typically you let your attorneys retain those. So I'm just saying like, there'd be a process to get those. Because I do think Mr. Wilson mentioned a good point, that, you know, if there's an issue, they can go back through and find that for us. So we'd want that, I would assume.
And Councilmember Pratt, when I did meet, when I did talk to Tim and talk about this process, I did say, you know, if the council selects another attorney, you know, about the records and, yeah, he assured me that there would be, those would be passed over to us.
There's no like date where they can be destroyed, right? Like they haven't destroyed anything, right?
So the record, it sounds like, well, there are record retention laws. It sounds like they've kept a lot more than they probably had to, but it's our benefit.
They said that they've had them for like thirty years, so that kind of surprised me.
So, and I guess they do have quite a bit from what I'm hearing, so.
I feel like you did, they, I really, and kind of, he was really flippant, but at least he was, he gave good, I liked him and I gave him a thirty-eight.
The last guy you're talking about?
Pardon?
The guy we just talked to, Matthew?
I was just, you know, the honesty, as far as number nine, hard to get in touch with. That, that concerns me, I mean.
Which one?
That's, this was Mr. Cross.
Oh, okay.
You know, yeah, he's, he may be, he almost came across too relaxed. I mean, he's bouncing in his chair, I mean, I've done, you've done a ton of it, and you're getting sold by. Sometimes that just doesn't look good. I mean, the second guy, Blake.
I thought.
Both, I think both did. I'm kind of leaning towards the second, the previous guy, just because he does have, you know, he has a lot of backing behind him. We didn't hear, and, and yes, it's, this guy is like, yeah, I'm, I'm going to do it all. And if he can, that's great. We didn't hear really about anybody else in the firm. And if he's got, if you look at the, you know, the list of what they've got going on, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff they're doing. So I worry about accessibility for, from him. It's a considerate, I don't worry, it's a consideration.
Accessibility for Bloom?
For this one.
For this, okay.
The second one though, didn't they say it like ninety?
No, the, the firm has ninety, he's got just two.
Two or three or whatever.
He's primary on three, he has twelve he represents, was what the second guy said, Blake said.
Yeah.
He started out saying three, but then his, then his co-council said, well, you really are on twelve, but you're primary for three. That's what I heard.
So I, I was disappointed in Micah Myers. I literally felt like it was a college kid with zero experience, and this guy had to say all the answers because he was talking from that piece of it. It almost makes me go, wow, and that's who's been representing us? So that was a little bit hard and it didn't feel, I didn't, I didn't hear the, we're a team, the rest of Micah Myers will support this, da, 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 da. I didn't feel like I heard that. I felt like I heard, he's here, he's your man, he's who you've got to deal with. And personally, I don't feel like we've gotten dealt with well enough with just him. The middle guy, Blake, with Bloom Sluggett, I, he started right off with a bang. He had like eight things he wanted us to know right off the bat. This is public sector, this is what we do, this is all we do, it's our main thing, we work as a team, we do this together. It's a team approach, we have experts in all different facets of public sector work. I thought he answered the questions very well, and I think if anything, his counterpart there just like added to what he said. And it was really nice to see that he had, he had a lead on that, yet he felt he was being supported by everybody else. I thought he was very, very good. And this, this guy right here was also good. I like to hear that you know who he's, because sometimes that makes a lot of difference, is you can say what you say. But I thought he was good too. I did think that Blake was just slightly better personally.
I agree with everything you just said, and I like the fact that, I can't read my own notes now. Blake's firm was interested in saving us money, like not driving up here for, you know, a ten minute meeting when it could be.
Right.
On Zoom or whatever. Yeah, I think I wrote down exactly the same thing you did on everything.
Yeah.
And that he is available for phone calls and whatnot.
Yeah.
I don't think I have anything different than you do.
Well, for me, it was the second and third option that rose to the top. I think it speaks volumes when you have a founding partner show up at a council meeting to kind of sell their firm. I mean, most founding partners aren't going to necessarily invest that much time, they kind of hand it off. And definitely it seemed like with Blake, it's a team approach. I think it's interesting that they focus on the public sector, so I think there's a lot of experience there that we're maybe not getting insight into right now. You know, he put in his paperwork that he's available twenty-four seven, so I guess, you know, hopefully we don't have to test that, but that's nice to know. I could leave, live with either one of those options and feel like the city's in good hands. I thought Mr. Cross did a great job too. I guess I hear what you're saying, Mr. Smith, but I guess sometimes like people's interview skills and body language, the way it's always interpreted is kind of sometimes different. So, you know, like the bouncing and that, and like, might not be how it was really meant. Like it could just be a nervous habit or something, and who knows how often one last time he did an interview was. Like it could just be a nervous habit or something. And who knows how often one last time he did an interview was. So I, I don't know. I think it's a hard choice between the two of them. And I think it's probably going to come down to cost and what we can negotiate. But I did appreciate that Blake's firm and Blake had mentioned like, let's try to save some money.
I put, I wrote down integrity after he said some of that stuff. I thought, wow, they're like trying to work with us. And he right away said, well, a, a weakness of ours is that we live in Grand Rapids. Like he was, he was forthcoming right away with what he perceived to be a problem. I also thought that was good. Sorry, interjected again there.
You know, if, if the team decided to go with Micah Myers, I guess my question on that would be, what does that support system look like? And could we choose another attorney in that firm? Because like in their, in their packet, they list off three, but then they list off all these others in Grand Rapids. So is there somebody else through that firm? If we decided to keep that firm, that would maybe make us all feel a little bit more confident in that selection. I don't know.
My only issue with them is the conflicts of interest that we've had. And we've had a lot of them. Like with the housing commission and that's my.
That's your only issue?
Yeah. And it does seem like there are a lot of conflicts because they're the only firm that's really local. So they do tend to be people's first go-to.
Is it, is it, is it, is it good or bad? I think what Cummings here is, also represents the county, correct? That's in their list. Is that, is that?
It was just, and it wasn't, it was just with that NM, I think with, it was an insurance.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not, yeah. He's not, it's not act representation. I've, I have represented these.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So I really wanted to support Micah Myers, but yeah, I felt the same way. Because I wanted it to be local, but he kind of filled that space in that interview. And the second one, I was really happy with. He was honest. He came as a team. The third one, he should have had someone with him, like to show that it wasn't just a lone ranger. He was, I felt he was cocky. And he gave me the impression that, the attorney impression, like you've, when you meet an attorney, and I didn't like that at all. And my worry is with them being out of town, are they going to be able to be a part of commission meetings and all that? That's the only worry.
No, that's what he talked about, being virtual.
The availability. And yeah, that's what I liked, that he could be.
Virtually. I mean, because I'm assuming that we'd pay, have to pay for them to drive here and drive back, so.
That would add up. And yeah, I think the virtual option is a good option for a lot of that stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I.
Yeah, because sometimes we have council meetings that are just like a half an hour long. We don't ever ask legal. So yeah, so if there's something that we don't.
Are they able to be virtual in a council meeting though? Because like when we can't be.
And we've done that. I think, I don't think that would be a problem, but we've done that with, you know, with some of the issues with the housing commission we've had legal, so.
If we're out of town, we can't come virtually.
Correct.
For voting.
I think it's different for legal.
Right.
I think there are some cities and townships that their attorney only attends virtually unless there's like a hot button issue or they've been specifically asked to attend in person.
So I can confirm that, but I'm, I think it's fine for them to attend virtually.
What's the timeline look like? I mean, I guess if we make a decision, what's the timeline look like for transferring them?
So talking to the mayor, I think we're looking at potentially on the, by the fifteenth, having a proposal in front of council with one of the candidates, if, if we're authorized to, to negotiate. The fifteenth of October.
And then that would go into a fact.
Um, that's something we'd have to negotiate, but I think the sooner the better.
So I don't think about Micah.
So does somebody want to make a motion to select a candidate to negotiate a contract?
Select Saget, whatever.
Bloom Sluggett?
Sluggett, sorry.
Bloom Sluggett?
Bloom Sluggett.
Okay. So you're going to make a motion for staff to negotiate a contract?
I'll make that motion for the staff to negotiate a contract with the, with Bloom Sluggett.
I'll second.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I just will say that, that I think both firms were doing a really good job and I'm not disappointed either one of them. I think it's kind of a coin toss, to be honest with you. And everybody says they're available twenty-four seven, no one is available twenty-four seven. I don't, Santa Claus, no I wasn't. Santa Claus is available twenty-four seven. So anyway, yeah, that's what I made with that.
Laura, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Bachman?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg?
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Grabowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Pontiac?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We have no citizens, so I will skip that. Do you have anything, Bill?
No, I do not.
Okay. Is anybody else, I'm not going to go through.
No, I don't have anything.
Nobody?
Are we giving all this stuff back, correct?
Yes. Laura, please.
All of it, all of it.
All of it, all of it?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.